Call the meeting order at 7:00 and please stand for the pledge. Okay, get the approval of the minutes of the February 1st.
I make a motion that we approve the meeting, the minutes of the meeting on February 1st.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Got it. Motion carried. The motion to accept the financial report and payment of the bills.
So move.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. Some budget amendments, Steve?
Oh yes, Senator. First and second amendment number 2012-009. This to reallocate savings from approved and previously purchased capable items. The purchase of one portable radio or hands flare device for the place supply. $3,870.
Okay. Motion to accept budget amendment 2012-009.
I'll sub move with the budget amendment 2012-009.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Second budget amendment is 2012-010. Is the budget of portion of revenue received from lease in agreement with Chesapeake Utilities for the replacement of four heat exchangers on the municipal building. That's amount of $26,250.
Okay, motion to accept budget amendment 2012-010.
Sub move.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. Okay, we got some time there. Republican, Lewis, you want to cover a couple items there?
My items?
Mm-hmm.
Just first item I have is an amendment to the policy for the public works recovery and origin release of abandoned private property. The town had passed a policy previously, but after close consultation with council, recommended the change of the policy for a 72-hour notice. We post on abandoned property on any town land. And also, we would retain the property for 30 days or more, depending on the circumstances, after which the property could be claimed by any person that would properly identify themselves or have specific information that might identify the claimant's property. I would recommend they accept the amendments advised on outline of previous email and explain this evening.
Okay. So we get a motion to accept the new policy?
Sub move.
Second.
Any other further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Next item I have is the board had asked me to look, or asked us to look into the removal of the sediment bore in the Big Elk Creek adjacent to the Delraven Bridge. Pursuant to that, Public Works has went down there and done evaluation, but we asked the KPI that submitted proposal to provide services for us to delineate the disturbed areas and calculate the removal and the depth of the stream and things of that nature. And they submitted a proposal to assist us in the waterway construction permit in order for us to do this job. Their consultation fee is $8,449, with the directest chances not to exceed 461. I presented it to the board tonight. I don't know if the board wants to pursue this project or not, but I'm not recommending it.
So they reduced their price because from your other email stating a $10,000 budget?
The $10,000 budget is to allow variance in the scope of services during the course of the work. They always put caveat in there that they won't do this or that when you have interface with a Corps of Engineers or MDE, so I put a budget amount in there. This won't, this won't remove the bar. This is just for permitting purposes.
Hmm, hmm, hmm. It's a lot of money. Is anybody interested in continuing to do this or is it going to cost some money?
Lewis, do we have an avenue to seek out any type of grants or anything available in that area?
We could pursue a grant, yes. I don't know what the grant is, but the board would like to defer decision until we could determine whether we could pursue a grant. We can do that.
Well, that might be a good idea. If we can get a grant, that certainly would help us.
I don't believe we'll get a CDBG or anything like that because the clearance of this sediment bore won't have a direct impact on the public. So, but there may be other grants out there we could floor, but I can come back to the board if you want to wait and we'll see what comes up.
Is anybody all right with that?
Yeah, that sounds good.
I make a motion that we defer the project until further information is brought forth.
I'll second.
Okay, other motion? Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. Okay. All right, Union Hospital? You've still got some time before they come up.
I'm Laurie Byard, CFO for the Union Hospital, and thank you for allowing us to present to you and see some familiar faces on the commissioner's table. Union is in the process of refinancing three of our bond issues, and the interest cost savings will be pretty significant, about $400,000 a year, and that money we will be able to put back into the community. So we have two requests. One of the issues, Series 2000, which was 2.8 million, was issued through the town of Elton, and the second series, 2009, was issued through Cecil County. And in both cases, those bonds receive bank-qualified status, which produce a lower interest rate. So the first request is that we would be able to refinance and issue those through the town of Elton, and the town will have no financial exposure under the bonds. I've met with Louis, George, and Steve, and do you want to comment?
We did this in 2000.
Correct.
We did it in 2000, and of course, I sent an email to the board, an information email, and of course, Steve reminded me that there's, it's all in our comprehensive financial audit or financial report, that there's a notation in there that there's no financial risk to the town through this process. It just allows them to have access to financial resources that have much lower interest rate benefits to the hospital. I believe it's a good thing for the hospital to have an opportunity to hold the development in this, and I highly recommend that we do it.
Well, this is the second time we've done it.
Yes, that's correct. I'm sorry, I didn't introduce myself. I'm Cheryl Guth. I'm a lawyer at McGuire Woods, which bond counsel, both to the town and some of their prior issues, as well as in the issue that occurred in 2000. I can confirm that under the state law, the town is not allowed to incur any pecuniary liability under the bond, so we put that on the face of the bond. We put it in the documents. You're fully indemnified by the hospital in case, you know, there would ever be a lawsuit, but there would never be a successful lawsuit because the town has no liability under the bond.
Unless if anything happened, we'd need medical services.
Well, maybe. Maybe a couple free parking spots, too. The second request is that there's $10 million of bank-qualified capacity that the town has, and so what we're asking is that if the town's not going to use that $10 million that we'd be able to use that as part of this refinancing. The refinancing is at 38.8. So a meeting with Louis and Steve indicated that maybe the capital requirements you all may have may be small, so whatever's left over, we would like to be able to utilize those funds. I know that you're going through your budget process currently, but that's my second request. And again, that lowers, you know, being able to access those funds, it's lower interest rate, and again, being able to realize those savings and put that back into the community.
Now, explain that to us. Steve, how's that going to work with our budget?
Well, until we did, set the budget, we don't know if there was any pending borrowing due up to my budget yet, and we're a little bit slow to cycle yet to determine if the pending budget is enough without the pending borrowing to come up pending, and that would be available, which is level, going to be available to Union Hospital. If we can't, if we settle to borrowing money up to my budget.
But we don't proceed. Borrowing a lot of money.
Well, we're not at a point to say yet, and we're somewhat early in the budget process.
I think you have a timeframe at which you need a response, though, right?
Yes, I mean, our goal was to close by the end of June, so if you all could let us know by, I thought you said maybe March timeframe?
We have a better handle on, you know, when we get further on the budget process at that time.
Well, if this came to being a timeframe issue, would we be able to vote on these separately instead of all both?
Absolutely, yes.
Because that's one that would be based on whether I needs or I need it based on
Correct.
that you use it or whatever. So I would rather use it as a two-part vote, if you don't mind.
And certainly, if the town would decide that they're comfortable with this idea, we would have a more formal process for approval. The hospital would issue a formal, what's called a letter of intent, where they would formally ask you to issue the bonds. We would come before you under the tax code. We need to have a public hearing, so we would hold a public hearing and then have a formal resolution whereby you would approve the issuance of the bonds.
Does it require a public hearing per se or action within a public forum?
No, it does, we do require a public hearing. We were required to give 14 days' notice in the local newspaper and then have you all hold a public hearing.
That's for Part B?
Yes.
So we can give you the approval for the first one, the bond, and we work, second one, we'll check when we get the budget on that part, because we do have some time for that. Okay.
And your second request, is that dependent upon your access or availability to that, that, those funds?
Yes, I mean, yes. I mean, we could go ahead and refinance without that, but we felt that we would just ask you, if you're not going to use all the $10 million, let us use the balance to realize the savings.
And just to clarify, she's not requesting funds for you per se. It's simply a designation of the bonds as bank-qualified.
Exactly.
Right. Yes, I'm not asking for money from you, though. I'm sorry.
And that's fine. I just wanted to make sure that was totally clear to everyone.
All right, then, do I have a motion to, we'll do the first one with the bond first to grant them?
I'll make a motion that we approve Part B. Certainly, I was here in 2000 where we, I'm sorry, Part A, when we did that in 2000, and certainly, it was great for the town, great for the hospital, so I'd make that motion to approve.
Second.
Any other further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. And we'll do the second one soon as we find out what our budget and everything's like.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
You're welcome.
That's simple.
Okay. Where were property? Dwight, you're up.
Thank you. I have with me this, you know, from Sevettino, who's one of the principals in the entities that are, have acquired and are acquiring various properties that are to be annexed. As you know, this request involves an area of approximately 60 acres at the intersection of Red Hill Road, Maryland Route 281, and Delancey Road, Maryland Route 781. It is on the, I'm terrible with directions. I guess it's the southwest corner. Does that sound right? Of that intersection.
Intersection, yeah.
I will hand out to you this evening, there's a general plan that, this is just a very preliminary concept. We've got many, many steps to go, but it's always nice to kind of give you guys something to look at. It is generally planned, here I'll hand these out and then I'll talk to you. I'm told it's a southeast corner. I think Mr. Wilson's probably better at direction than I am, so I'll take his word for it. But, yeah. Anyway, the general plan is to, for this to be probably a multifamily development, probably done in phases over time. You're not going to see all that development occur all at once. Very possible that there would be a mix of apartments and condominiums, and obviously there would be areas that would have to deal with forest conservation, open space, stormwater management, and all those other things that you get involved in with regard to development. There's certainly some consideration that some of it may be age-restricted. So anyway, that's generally the concept. This property is zoned for multifamily residential development in the county. The proposal would be that you would accept it into town under your R3 designation, which would allow multifamily residential development in the town. It is our understanding that obviously sewer capacity, sewer treatment would be provided by the town, where you're in good shape there with regard to sewer capacity. I'm sure your planning, commission and planning department has either already advised you of that or will this evening. I'm assuming that the water eventually would be provided, it'd be probably provided by the town, but you may very well be purchasing that from Artesian, since there's a major Artesian water line that goes right down Route 7 now, as I recall, into the town. So it certainly would be right there at the site. The traffic patterns would, will be driven, frankly, through the development process by the Maryland State Highway Administration. Both of these roads are state highways, and I anticipate there will be a significant amount of work that will have to go into getting their approval for how the traffic would be impacted and changed and approached with regard to any multifamily residential development at that site, because they're going to have to take into consideration the new traffic as well as the existing traffic, and as you probably are going to hear tonight, if you haven't already, certainly there's a significant amount of traffic on that roadway. Unfortunately, a lot of it doesn't have anything to do with people that live there. It has to do with a lot of people like me that drive through there from time to time. And hopefully, this would be an impetus for the State Highway Administration to address some of what's been happening for an extent, you know, there's been gradual growth of traffic on that roadway for some time, and it's about time somebody takes a look at it and addresses the whole situation.
And I agree with you, Dwight, and I was going to bring that up. Anyway, I think that either developer and we're good with the State Highway Department, because right now, 781, 281, Delancey and Red Hill, in the mornings, we, when I come to work, that's almost about 10 minutes of eight, that traffic is backed up on Delancey Road from Red Hill almost right back to the apartments, and same way in the rush hour. And most of it is a lot of the people that are going to Delaware, making that right-hand turn.
Right, that's correct.
And it backs everybody up. It's, you only can only get two cars, maybe, the front, and if the guy pulls up far enough, you can get, the guy maybe squeezes around. It's that whole intersection, but you have to be totally reconfigured.
Right.
Somebody'd have to be in, get that thing done, so you would have a dedicated right lane for those people going to Delaware, because most of them that use Delancey Road, that's a shortcut, and they go right through there, right into, start to Delaware. Very few of them turn there, and the ones that turn to your left usually wind up going up to Muddy Lane.
And then heading up to 95, yeah.
Going up to 95. So those two traffic points right there is a total, with this going on, there's no way.
Yeah, it's our understanding that the state is already studying the muddy lane intersection for maybe something they may want to be doing on their own.
Yeah, we're working on something right now.
Right, the good, the good thing with regard to this particular project is, at this intersection, is they would own a significant amount of frontage on both of the affected roads, both state highways, so that they will have room to make some improvements on, on both of the highways, not just one of the highways. A lot of times, you get one of these, you only have enough frontage to do something on one of the highways, but in this case, they'll have enough frontage to do something on both highways. And like I said, I've already warned my clients that I think one of the significant aspects, but that would be true whether it's developed in the county or the town, frankly. One of the significant aspects they're going to have to deal with is the State Highway Administration in terms of addressing.
Yeah, because they may require, may require you to help with the project, and maybe want, maybe want you to help them fund the thing, sort of road improvements, since it's a big development, something that you'd have to work with the State Highway.
Yeah, as you know, the process, I'm pretty sure the process will be, there would have to be an updated traffic impact study done, and then based upon that study, the State Highway Administration would indicate what, what required corrections would need to be made, and, and hopefully, we would get their cooperation through that whole process.
So basically, if I'm looking at this, and you have one or two, one going out, one exit onto Red Hill, that's the only one, and you don't have anything going on in Delancey?
But that's conceptual at this time. Again, that will depend upon what the State Highway Administration decides to do with that whole area. One of the things I do know my clients have discussed often is, in terms of internally, they will try to create a traffic pattern internally, so that if you're internal, you don't have to go back out on the main highway, but also to discourage any kind of pass-through traffic. I'm assuming there will be access onto both Red Hill Road and Delancey Road, but what we won't want is people passing through the subdivision to get, to bypass all the traffic improvements. We're going to have to build it at the intersection, so there will be, that will be taken into consideration through the planning process.
I can tell you, I mean, I've been trying to get sidewalks up and down there, but State Highway, they have no right-ofways along Delancey Road, so that creates a problem for them. So that could be a real problem, putting any traffic, any more traffic on Delancey Road, because I don't think there's any way that we could, or they could even widen it any wider, because even with sidewalks, they tell me they got problems with right-ofways, and most of it's not there for them, so.
And that's part of what we would be able to provide for them as a part of the planning process, and that will impact, I mean, there's some, there's some provisions in there about units. Ultimately, the number of units that will go in there will, will be impacted by a lot of those factors, you know, by, by stormwater management, by traffic impact requirements, by any number of other aspects of the design. You always have your engineers start out and they give you a concept to start with, and then you start working from down from there as to which you can really actually get in there in light of all the other requirements, so that'll all be part of the process. But, you know, ideally, yeah, you're right, some sidewalks could be included as well as some road improvements may very well be what's required.
Because they are, they will be making some road improvements to Delancey Road at the other end, at the entrance down at the, around 40. But if it's going to be this year or sometime, maybe, Louis?
I don't know if they funded it.
Funded it. So there will be some improvements at that end that we work on.
I kind of lost about, I don't know if you remember, back when the Williams car dealerships came in and then the housing development behind that. I represented both the Williams people and the people that developed behind them, and I, at that time, I asked the State Highway Administration to take a look at changing that whole intersection and bringing, making a traffic signal where the industrial park came out and the Williams, where they had that big wide in between the two. Before the housing development was done, they were willing to talk about changing that whole intersection and making that the intersection of Delancey Road and closing off the bottom of the old intersection of Delancey Road. I couldn't get the State Highway Administration agreeable to that. I had my developers ready to do that, but I couldn't get the State Highway Administration to do it. So hopefully, this time around, they'll be a little bit more cooperative. I think they're, they've now seen that, that what's happened with that road, that, you know, that they need to take a look at the, the big picture, not just this particular development, but what's going on overall.
Yeah, because also, even in the evenings, a lot of people use it for a shortcut. You come from Delaware or the other end to get to Walmart, too, so that's like a shortcut for almost anybody to use right now.
Yes, it is. I use it all the time. I have a son that lives up in the Newark area, and every time I go up there, I go that way. I don't know if you have any other questions. This is a step one of a very long process. I would suggest to you, there probably, you won't see any building out there next year or maybe, maybe the year after, you know, it's going to take an extended period of time to, to get through the planning process of something like this, and these guys have done it before. They understand that, so it's not like they're going to be building houses next month, but we need to start somewhere, and I advised them, I felt that even though they could theoretically develop it in the county or in the town, it made all the sense in the world for it to be in the town, because it's kind of surrounded by the town to begin with. I mean, you know, everything around there, for the most part, has been developed in town, and, you know, it makes sense to use the town water and sewer facilities. So anyway, it makes sense to police it and everything else within the town, because there isn't really much of the county. If you go out there, you have, what, two houses or whatever, and you're in the state of Delaware, so they agreed, and that's why we're here.
Okay. Any other questions, Ellen? Jeannie?
Want this or? Or should I copy of the annexation plan, formerly known as the extension of the zoning plan for the project? We submit information packets as required by Art 666, the Maryland Department of Planning and Cecil County Government. Cecil County Government did not read the grant consent. The zoning change from county RM to town R3 because the zoning is consistent, not higher density than what the county zoning currently is. The Department of Planning just noted that parcels over in birth area 1 identified in the 2010 comprehensive plan of the town of Elton, and is consistent with 2010 Cecil County Comprehensive Plan, which designates the parcel as a high-density birth area in the county. We also, the Planning Commission has a regular meeting on Monday, February 6, 2012, for the annexation request with White, Comey, representing Silver Properties, Williams Diane, Williams Land Company, for property consisting of approximately 60.85 acres, more or less, located on Red Hill Road and Delancey Road. Further, this fragment tax map 308, parcels 177, 139, 612, 179, 390, 1067, 737. On the tax map 312, parcels 277, 733, 182, 183, 181, 661, 193, 281, 328, 184, 267, and 907, which is currently zoned RM, multifamily residential, for Cecil County zoning. The applicants are requesting R3 multifamily residential, county of Elton zoning upon application. The other planning commission unanimously recommended approval of the annexation and zoning request.
Okay. Do I have any other questions? Any?
Can I say something? I did sign in. Mr. Tsai, may I say something? I did sign in. Before you make, are you getting ready to make a decision?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
I may, I may say something?
Yeah, yeah, we're just getting ready to go, we'll call McKenney, by.
Okay, if Mr. Temmies, or if Mr. Temmies?
Come on, come on, yeah.
Do you want to have a seat?
Well, I'm. Okay.
Just take your name and address.
My name's Kim Bradley-Ball. I live on Delancey Road. I'm not included in the annexation, thank goodness, and I'm 333 Delancey. And my name's Kim Bradley-Ball. And I just think this is a really bad idea, and I didn't mean to disrespect anybody. I just interview a property, you want to do what you want with it, and I do get that. But if I may ask, who's paying for the, and I miss of you own the properties, so who's paying for the hookups for those two private citizens?
Generally, what is anticipated is going to happen is, yeah, if you let me finish, okay. We do not, right now, some of these, there are a few houses on some of these properties that are on well and septic. As far as I know, there is no problem with, with the well and septic at this time. We would probably leave them on well and septic until such time as a development occurs. Those houses probably will then be removed, and all of the new development would then be tied into the town's water and sewer system, and the developers would have to pay for the hookups at that time.
So developers would pay for the hookups. Okay, who notifies these folks, I mean, the Hanson's and certified letter, I suppose, is what they're writing here.
The owners of the properties?
Yes.
All of the owners of the properties have signed a petition.
Who notifies them? Obviously, the town or builders, or who's speaking with these folks that evidently understand the taxes are going about 33 percent, and are going to have a quarterly letter.
Again, if I can answer the question, every one of the, the owner of every property that's included in this petition has signed the petition requesting to be annexed.
Okay, do approach them to the board?
The developers approach them.
Okay, so with. So with that being said, like Mr. Tenny said, you know, states probably want to give you a little bit of a hard time on this, because I can remember in 1980, someone trying to build at the end of Delancey, and the state would not allow it. Okay, and my issue's the traffic. Okay, and my issue is the problem that in the preliminary plot that I have right here, you're going to have 120 apartments that you're going to build. Again, of course, you're going to build apartments, because nobody's going to be paying for a house or condominium. So you're going to build apartments, you have transits, more police. Okay, that is going to be important to this unless it's changed. That's going to be 120 apartments, so that's going to be at least 240 more cars, and everything ends up on Delancey. Okay, then if you build the condominiums, that's 330 condos that have to change. Okay, so that's going to be another 660-plus cars on Delancey. If they're, you know, two cars per home if they're resold. Okay, and if they have children, additional cars. So, and everything ends up on Delancey, I mean, muddy lane, you have all that traffic. When I drive on Route 40 or into Delancey, muddy lane, I mean, my head's spinning like on The Exorcist or something, because there's just traffic going everywhere. I mean, I just really don't think that, I mean, if you have to build something, you build single-family homes. The zoning needs to be changed. It doesn't cram in eight homes on one acre is not a good idea. I mean, come on. I mean, it really isn't. I mean, it's just bizarre to do that. I know it's revenue, and you're behind, you know, I understand that, but, I mean, and Mr. Tenny also mentioned about that town in Newark grew, and, you know, I don't want to be New York, we're still over Boynton right now. You know, I don't want that. You know, and I know Delancey Road's not going to be what it was, and I don't expect it to be, and I don't want it to get any worse. And basically, I mean, I just wish you would reconsider the zoning. And, I mean, you have houses being put up every day, you're going to have transits coming in apartments, people up and coming, crying, I mean, you're going to need more police, I mean, it's just going to be more costly. And frankly, I don't even know if the state's going to approve it, anyway. So, and, you know, and you're going to have.
You need to be addressing the board. I'm not sure whether I'm familiar with the process. But I understand, you wouldn't toad that, but you should be addressing the board, and if we need to have comments from you, we will.
I'm sorry.
That's okay.
But even for builders, I mean, why would they want to be annexed in the town, paying more taxes, butter sour, until something may or may not even happen back there? You know, but I really, really wish you would reconsider the zoning. I mean, it's just too much. I mean, it's too many. I mean, muddy lane, look at all those townhomes down there. I mean, I just plead with you, at least you save it down like well, I mean, two homes on an acre or something like that. You know, it's just, it's just too much. And, you know, I know, or giving you minds up, but I just say my piece. So, and I'm sorry to interrupt you, but I'm just having my second minute here. So, anyhow, but I just really think it's a bad idea to annex something in when we do not even know if it's ever going to happen. And even to their advantage, because it would be less taxes you'd have to have. Oh, what I'm saying. So, anyway.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else wish to?
Excuse me?
Please. Anyone else wishing to speak? Okay, then this public hearing is now closed.
If I can just respond very briefly, and a couple of things. Again, I want to emphasize to all of you, obviously, we're at a very preliminary stage. The issue that's before you tonight is whether this property's going to develop in the county or in the town. It's in the growth area in both the county's comprehensive plan and the town's comprehensive plan. The other thing, I just, there was a gentleman that lives on Delancey Road that happened to come to the planning commission meeting, and I think it was a good point that he made. He's been living on Delancey Road, he's said for about 20, 25 years, and he said, whether I like it or not, Delancey Road is now what it is now, it's not what it was 20, 25 years ago, and I can't magically turn the clock back and make it something it's not. This is in the growth area of the county and the town. It's an area where growth is planned, where it probably should occur, to the extent that there's going to be people going to work, it's less likely they're going to be driving all over the rest of the county to get to work. They're either going to work here in Elkton, or they're going to drive up into Delaware right away and go to work. And frankly, things have changed in the last 10 years. People don't want a house in two acres anymore, or a house in a half acre, you know. There's an awful lot of people, because of the cost of heating and maintaining a house and what's happened to them, they either want to rent an apartment, or they want something smaller and more dense and closer in toward town. The old idea of having your big McMansion out in the countryside, a lot of people don't want that anymore. So there is a demand for this kind of housing. That's about it. Thank you.
Okay.
May I add one more thing? Sorry. With that being said.
That's just close. Go ahead.
I'm sorry. With that being said, remember that you have proposed homes, they're going to be empty, people picking up, leaving, I see it every day, and you have homes that can't even be sold. So why would we want to build more?
Okay. You both have any other questions, or concerns?
I do have a question. I can't quite remember the R3 zoning. Would we, Jeanie, would we be able to accommodate single-family dwellers?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. All right. Do I have a motion to accept the annexation A1-2011?
I'll make a motion to accept the annexation of A1-2011.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Any other business?
Mayor, I am sorry, I should crash. Yes, sorry.
No one told you the procedure, so you didn't do anything out of order.
You're all right, Kim.
It's okay.
Any other business, Mary Jo?
No.
You have any other business?
No.
No, I don't have any. You have any? You have any other business? Okay. I have a few things. Mary Jo, I know you mentioned the senior citizen center is full, and I got some figures with map code, just curiosity. And it is growing. Actually, in 1980, we had 5,553 people, and 2,000 jumped to 8,995, almost 9,000. And then in 2010, 11,000. So Elkton is number one with the most ones, Northeast is second, Fort Deposit is third, Rising Sun's fourth, Cecilton's fifth, and Chesapeake City's sixth. So this area is growing with senior citizens, and so that's just a good point to know that we are, we've got an older population here. And just for everybody's information, it has a AVI decal that's going to the Hayden Bridge, just so everybody knows. They have a new procedure now that you're going to have to go through. But just so everybody knows, Tuesday, February 21st, at Prairie High School, they're having an open house, be held for the EZ Pass Hayden Bridge plans. So you can come between 5:00 and 7:00 to sign up for your EZ Pass. If that's, if anybody's going to be using the Hayden Bridge now, so it's going to be totally changed. I don't think, there's not going to be any decals, it's just going to be the EZ Pass.
That's what.
Pardon?
Hasn't decals been good until September?
Right. Now, they want everybody to get updated with their EZ Pass, yeah. I've got some appointments. Had a resignation letter from a gentleman on the planning commission, Roger McCarty, he's going to be going out of town for his job, so accepted his resignation from the planning commission. And I'd like to appoint Edward Edginder to the planning commission. So I get a motion to accept him for our planning commission.
That's a move.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
And then on the planning, on the water zoning appeals, we have one gentleman that I want to be reappointed. So we have a gentleman, Charles Kramer, which I sent out your copy of his resume to him to be appointed to the board of zoning appeals. Do I get a motion to accept him?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. The housing authority would like to reappoint Commissioner Hicks to the housing authority. Do I get a motion to accept Commissioner Hicks?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. On the election board, we've had numerous people that have decided not to want to be reappointed, and Paula Newton gave me some people that she's already contacted that wish to serve, and they are Karen Loffhaus, Kay Michaels, and Kimberly Schaefer to be on the election board. So I get a motion to accept those people?
That's a move.
Okay. All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. And one more gentleman for the bike circle advisory committee, Brian Murphy wishes to be appointed to that board. Do I get a motion to accept him?
Second.
All right. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. Okay, that's everything. I have, yep. Mary Jo, anything?
I want to thank Commissioner Gibbons for creating the Elkton High School scholarship guidelines. I don't know if everybody got a chance to look at it, but it looks to the point, and great, so thank you. Also, I'd like to discuss the parking on North Street. We have a new business there, North Street Nutrition, and they're very busy from like 6:30 in the morning to 9:00, going to get at lunch, and then at dinner. And I've been watching almost every day where they're allocated the two spots alongside the Howard House for pickup and delivery. The trucks don't use it anymore, and I talked to one of the truck drivers yesterday, and he said the reason he doesn't use it, because since they put the bump outs, they can't go through, they have to back up, so they're parking in the streets. Is there any way we could get, put those two spots back to just two-hour parking? And also, address the four o'clock issue again. I swear, the last time we discussed parking downtown, we talked about stopping at four o'clock. We were, Earl had talked about, gone to the Howard House, and to stop the parking at four o'clock. And it's still 4:30.
So what are you suggesting, Mary?
I just think four o'clock for the parking is a good time, and also, like I said, there's two spots by the Howard House, no truck uses it to deliver or unload. They park in the middle of the road, so if they do that, why not use those two parking spots for people to park if they're empty?
Well, you said they park in the middle of the road?
Yeah.
And that's blocking traffic.
Well.
So it creates a problem, and if that's cars parked there, they park on the other way, then the cars will have to go around.
Well, if the cars can get to a parking spot, it's okay, but the fact is, where they used to park, they don't anymore. So if we could get them back for parking spots, rather than loading and unloading.
So the trucks pull in the middle of the road, is what you're saying?
Right.
Blocks the traffic. Blocks the traffic, too.
Well, they're at a time when the traffic's usually not that bad, but they, I did ask the one gentleman to move yesterday into a parking spot, because there was traffic. But I just, a suggestion.
Mary Jo, were you asking about the four o'clock parking? Does that mean the meters go on at four?
The meters, yeah.
Okay. Thank you, I just wanted.
And I also had requested putting time on the meters, and there's not, and there's no time stickers on the meters.
There's some on some of them.
Some, not, not all. I was at, I was at the hospital the other day, and there was no sticker on it. I mean, I don't know if the board wants to discuss that. It was like, most of the businesses close at four o'clock, so it gives people the opportunity to go somewhere, 4:30 rather, so it gives them the opportunity to go somewhere and sit there for a while.
When I said that, I thought four.
I thought we said at four o'clock, and it was, and I checked, and it still says 4:30.
Okay, so you want to amend the ordinance to allow to check parking only till 4:00 PM?
And I thought we had stayed there by the hospital, we'd keep it the same, but within the minceral lot, main north, that area till four, is what I thought we had discussed before.
Well, I can't do it. I bring an ordinance to the board, and they cast it.
Well, I wanted to know what other board members thought.
If you can do that, we can amend the ordinance and bring it to the board.
Could I please ask that we find out what type of impact that might be as far as monies to the town, as far as the meters go? Did we do that before as well?
Yeah, we had a study done.
Yes. That's why I said I remember this conversation well.
Years ago, the town had meters everywhere, had a significant impact on the board of voting many years ago, removing most of the meters. We don't appreciate any serious revenue from the early. Revenue, money being moved before revenue goes up.
Anything else, Mary Jo?
I'm sorry.
Anything else? That's all. One thing I did forget, a couple of things. First of all, I think congratulations are in order to Mary Jo for being the, excuse me, the citizen of the year.
Thank you.
Also, I just, too, I have to make two more appointments to the election board, Paula Newton and Jill Vambos, so if I get, they'll be reappointed. Do I get a motion to accept those two?
That's a move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. Thank you. Earl?
Yeah, I've got a couple of concerns still with the RMR building and some other abandoned buildings. I know we followed up with the owner before about renting or leasing the building, whatever way he was planning on doing it. But, you know, after calling past that building several times, the structure still can't be used with redoing a new development, you know, playing with that site. Why don't we have to tear that wall down, make the place look better than just sitting up like some kind of maze? Isn't that possible? We can get some kind of action done with that building where you can't use that foundation that they have sitting up for no new construction, if I'm not mistaken. Why are we allowing this just to stay up there and look like some kind of bandit?
I don't know what we could do, I thought I presented, I didn't pass it to the public, because Ben Saul very interested in it.
Yeah.
He has, he has, he can mark, he did say the last time, I think we talked to him some time ago, he can knock the walls down, but he has to get with MDE, something about that, because that way that they allow him to knock down the walls, he can keep the flooring there, but he can't do anything with the flooring because of the ground for the environmental problem. And then he wants to build some, some, I like apartments, like six of them separately, but to do that, we have to amend our comprehensive plan to get it changed, or to have the zoning changed as well. So he's waiting to see how that goes through. But he can get the walls down if he gets permission from MDE.
The reason why I'm saying that is, if we don't do anything or don't say anything, that could stay like that for the next 10, 15 years. No one's making any action to make any kind of improvement in the eyes of the site of the town or their property. So that's the reason why I'm bringing that up. It's nothing else but the eyesore, just like some other abandoned properties that we need to address. So.
And I think if we look in our code book under blighted properties, there's going to be something there that says we could send them a letter for something.
We'll send them a letter.
Because it's.
There's no question, Mark, do, with this, we'll send them a letter. I don't know how it was filed, or what it replied to us. I don't think it escalated to a, I don't think there's any action against them.
Well, I'm just asking for something. Well, I'm just asking for something that we can use to enforce them to make some kind of a better decent site of a piece of property that's not being done, anything done to it. And I mean, we need to really start stepping our foot down on, on the properties that have been in question.
Yeah, I, I'd like to, I'd like to chime in if I could. I, I agree with both Commissioner Ponder and Commissioner Dublonsky. I know that particular property and several others have come across this subject many times before, and it seems that we are, you know, we, we can definitely send, uh, send letters and ask for cooperation, but maybe we can actually take a closer look at our ordinance concerning blighted properties. I know there are examples in other municipalities that there's a type of schedule program that's set up for blighted properties to actually, uh, more forcefully, for lack of better terms, get cooperation from the property owners as far as development.
The emphasis was made to that company, and that's why they took out all the debris and everything, and they spent considerable amount of money removing many, many tons of debris from that place, and left just those walls and those walls, I think initially were structurally sound, whether they are now, I don't know, I'm not an engineer, but I think that's why they were left there, because they have some value to reconstruction of the building. I agree with Commissioner Ponder, they've probably been sitting there so long, I don't know if I classify them as structurally sound or not at this point. We will send a letter to Schwab and ask him if they'll remove those walls.
Well, again, my suggestion is that, you know, I think we've, we've done that before, to the point I can remember being in a position, working for the town, to where the wall kind of fell apart at one time, and we had to, one of the walls, and we had to take more direct action at that point. And it seems that we're pretty much going to be waiting for the same thing to happen. And that's why I would suggest that we possibly take a look at our ordinance to possibly develop some type of program concerning abandoned or properties that are blighted, for lack of better terms.
Yeah, 'cause you might remind him that when we had a recreation discussion of where we're going to put a recreational center, he came in and talked to us, and he did mention that, and that he said he could tear them walls down, so, and yet he has not done that, so we might be able to force him to get that much out of him, and would like...
He's been selling his own property for years.
Right. He knocks down...
But the fact is...
It looked nicer to, to, well, it looked a little bit better if he got the walls down, at least to try and sell it, I mean, you know...
The thing needs to be implemented is, we've got to dictate to him, the property owners, that you have a timeframe to either develop it or tear it down, that's bottom line. We, we're not really pushing the way we really should be in order to get things to happen. We're sending nice letters, and then we get a nice response that says, "I'm not sure what I'm doing yet." We need to put a timeline on, abandoned properties been banned for the last five, 10 years, and say, "This is enough." The town of Elkton is tired of property that's just sitting around for 15, 20 years, not being developed. Tear it down.
Yeah, I agree with everyone. We have to look and make a schedule, I think is the perfect thing. Follow the timeline and get something, you know, that, that other towns are using, that is more demanding on the, on the property owner, and make sure it's legal, and go forward with that, because...
You go a little further down the street, you'll see another building.
Exactly. So we're not just looking at one building here, we're, there's several in town. So if we look at our code and we get something together that we follow...
And, and then, you know, through the research, there are towns that, or municipalities that do have in place timeframes, whereas after so many years, there's a, a fee, and it continues to escalate when there's no action or movement on the property.
Okay. Rex? Anything else?
Charlie? I, I have that same thing written on the, similar to what Earl had said before. I know on my way to work, a lot of mornings, I call Lewis before I get to my job and tell him that he needs to ride through Stockton Street. I think I did the same thing on Monday. It's, it's deplorable, the conditions that you see when you go through them, specifically talking about the apartment, there's trash all over the properties, there's trash out there on non-trash days. And you know, sometime if you have not been at Elkton before and you drive into the Board of Education, which is one of the bigger employers in Cecil County, it's terrible to ride through there and see what you see when you go through there. I mean, that's always, and, and Lewis, you know, I call you on various mornings. And also on North Street, right at the pole where it used to be that store, I can't remember the house though, there's always trash on that corner. And it's another thing, he has trash out there on non-trash days, and you got buses, and you got kids, and you got everybody going through North Street there. And you can't miss it because it's right on the turn at the pole.
I agree.
And I'll tell you about that one as well, so I guess I always ask you before you come to work here if you would stop there. Also, if you would have Public Works to look at the sidewalk between Heath Realtors and United Methodist Church, this sidewalk is bad. It's got holes and ruts in there.
They're going to do that. They're going to redo that.
So when is that going to be done?
He said spring, he's already planned, got a plan to do that, and I think we have, I think we have rated entries for all the properties still. Matter of fact, Mr. Barnes, uh, has already asked for the...
All right, so that's on the agenda.
Because we don't own the property there.
Yeah, and another young lady said off the top, she walks right in front of the sidewalk right here, and she said she has a tendency to get her shoes caught in the unevenness of, of the walkway. Could you have a minute, look out there and see in the front there? For a man, it's probably different than when they walk, but for a woman, I believe it might be a tad bit different. If you just look at it, it'd be most appreciated.
What was that?
Right in front of here, North Street, the building here. I mean, if you can walk out there, I'm going to be reminded, say, say them to work, and then you can let them to come there. And lastly, Mary Jo, I see your name in the paper, so congratulations in advance for your nomination.
Thank you.
And I'm done.
I want to piggyback on that, congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay. And also, I would like to just bring up for possible discussion by the board, to maybe consider a, a full-time grant writer, to be employed by the town in some way, shape, form, just an idea for discussion.
A grant writer would be fine, but let me throw something back, would we be able to find something for them to do if they weren't writing grants, because sometime you can be busy and then sometimes you can be minimized.
Well, the, the, my, my idea of a full-time grant writer would be doing just that.
Grants?
Uh, continuously going after grants, whether they be for all types of projects that we may see coming up, that we may have a need for, community centers, just all types of grants out there and there. There are continuously grants going, so I wouldn't see that they wouldn't, they would have any downtime.
Okay, good.
We'll take Jeannie's spot too, because Jeannie does a lot of her grant writing, and she's familiar with that, so we'll take that from her and give that to the person.
Um, I, I'm sorry?
Yeah, Jeannie does CDVJ and local area and all.
But I guess he's saying also, and I won't pick you, Earl, I guess he is saying somebody that that would be their job specifically, and they do that from eight until four o'clock, that they just constantly write grants and/or try to seek grants.
And then I think there's many, many more grants out besides the ones that you just mentioned.
Well, the Parks and Rec gets grants.
They do?
Yep. Mary writes for grants. Yep. Yep.
So we just have a couple grant writers, Mary does hers, and Jeannie does hers for the other department.
And Chief has, has it on. Carolyn Allen, I believe, takes care of the grants for the police.
Carolyn Allen does the grants.
Yep. She writes for grants for the police, and they do, do well.
I've talked to just other towns, and, and they just say that they, there's just a ton of money out there, and maybe something to consider.
That ton of money's going to dry up one of these days with $5 trillion. That's what I can tell you.
I believe, I believe that. I believe that.
Anything else?
No.
Okay. Becky?
My name is Rebecca. I'm here number one for Maria Jo. She, I know, I assume she does this, but I can take it. It's all, she's done a wonderful town job for this town, for its children. I don't know if you all like it, I don't care if you don't like it. Don't have to go or hit you to go out. That's the new truth. If it wasn't for Maria Jo, we wouldn't have anything in this town for the children. Don't tell me no, I'm telling you the truth. We have old home shows, car shows, we have things for the children. I work with Maria Jo, she's done a lot. I've been here for years with Maria Jo. I'll be here as long as I've been, so God takes me home. And I hope that's another 40 years, and I'm suddenly. But I also would like to thank Mr. Ponder for things he's talked to me about and helped me with, because there's a lot of depression I've been through with this town that's still going on. Nothing I have ever, ever suggested in the last 30 years, or the last 10, has been done. I've mentioned eight houses in Hollinsworth Manor every time I step down up here. Not a one of them has had one thing done from since Mr. Hicks left. And believe me, when he was there, they did not look like trash. Furniture outdoors, 154, furniture outdoors. Eight dogs, 14 cats, 153. Five dogs, 16 cats. Want to ask me how now? I go every day. Want to ask me how? That's my business. But I go out there, 148 has a boat in the yard with no tag and no car, with homemade Now we have enough trash in Elkton that's disgracing Elkton. If you ride through northeast, where originally found an upnet, you do not see tents. Not seeing people living under bridges. You do not. You cannot, you will not, because officers will not put up with it. The town, the nationers will not put up with it, and neither will America. It is here for the board, because it's doing a very good job. Have one problem, but I won't mention their names. But most of my board members are doing a wonderful job. I'm very sorry I can't get one to understand everything I'm trying to say. I'm suddenly seven years old. Yes, I've had very basicness Mr. Hicks moves. I'm still losing weight because of cancer. If God wants me, he can have me in life, I've done my share with the town. But my problem is, you know what? I mostly want to thank Mr. Hicks for what he did for me last night. You all are going to believe this. He seen what I've been going through. Three years with 150, he was there last night. Bingo is not an easy thing for one person. Call the numbers, get up, call the man, make sure they're right. Buy the gifts, put them on the table. I do not regret one penny I spend on the seniors or my children. They're worth it, every bit of them. They're not kids. I get sick and tired of you people, and all of these clown people, kids. Kids are billy goats. If you ever had one, you know what a billy goat was.
You've got 10 seconds. Okay?
I know you just want to do that, but you're ignorant from me anyway.
No, five minutes.
Anyway, needless to say...
Becky.
Needless to say, I appreciate what Mr. Hicks did last night. He called Bingo for me, and we have asked him if he will continue to help us with the seniors, because it's hard on me to do it all.
I meant it's up, Becky.
And he has been doing a wonderful job, and Mr. Hicks, please stick with us and help me.
Sure.
Thank you, and God bless you.
You too. Thank you.
I know you hate me, Joe.
And you can pass it around for change, that, the old truck stop.
Okay. We can use that mic if you want to.
Probably everybody knows me, Earl, man. Five, nine, eleven. This has been going on for some time now, this trash and tires. I've got enough tires up there, I think I can put up a wall. Trash is the problem, open trash. It's going to start creating rats, and I don't live too far down the way, that they'll be down, not to live with me. Now, the owners are, of course, going to live in the area. I traced it out myself, they, there are two families that live, I believe, in North Carolina. And I believe the town has sent them a letter, but that's only been within the last two weeks. This trash problem has been going on for, I know, at least two, three years. And something has to be done about, not only the cleanup, but I think the owners should put a gate across, not where the old truck stop gate was, because that's too far in.
Right.
That's about 500 feet in from where we really need a gate that expands or a fence expands wide enough, that you can't drive around it.
Wasn't there a wire thing on two posts, wasn't there something there one time?
Well, they had two posts there with a chain break.
Yeah, that's what, yeah, okay.
But one, uh, one of the out-of-state truckers backed in there one time, and that was the end of the chain and the post.
Wow.
So I feel that the owners need to put up a good substantial gate and a fence wide enough and high enough that they can't drive around it and dump the trash, because when the gate was there from the old truck stop, and decided, I was just to make a comment, somebody stole that, because the center post for the two gates, they cut her off with a, some kind of a, a brazier collector and gate, and saw. They also cut down the, the tall pole out there that had the big ring on it with all the lights on it. They, they cut it down, cut the bolts off and let it fall. So even when the gate was there for the old truck stop, there was trash being dumped because people could drive back in 500 feet in the middle of the night and throw it off. But I don't know what will suffice, but I think the town really needs to get on it and not just, you know...
Well, I can tell you, we did send him a letter on January 31st, and then he did sign for it on the second, or this month, February the 2nd, and apparently his address is now, one of them, apparently owners maybe, is in Winchester, Virginia. But he did receive the certified letter, and Lewis just sent him another letter stating of the situation and pictures along with it, and if they don't do something soon, then we'll just issue criminal summons after him.
Picture it.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's bad out there. Yeah, it's, it's, it's bad out there.
I'm sure so that you'd really get a good idea of what's really out there. I don't, I don't know whether any commissioners have been out there or not to take a look at it, but.
It's a mess. Definitely a mess.
Few minutes of my time. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
How many letters have been now sent out to this property at this point?
There's one right now, which was just last month and he just received it this month.
So for the past year or so, still only been one letter sent out to their property?
It's all the letter I got.
That's all I have.
Yep. I can see how much is bound up.
The property, property ceded to six individuals, three of them are white teens and the address that they used is in Winchester, Virginia. So I sent a letter to the husband and wife of each teen, so to speak, and a separate individual letter and sent pictures of course still. And since that time, I've contacted, I had a contact person with the owners there that I used, I had much inter-mail with or correspondence with during the process with the Maryland Transportation Authority when we had the road deed into the town. And actually, we bought it. And I used that person and they asked me if I could recommend a contractor to remove all this stuff and to take action as quickly as possible. And he was talking to the owner as of yesterday, this morning actually, he said he was talking to the owner, he would get back to me.
What about them?
Recommend the local contractor to do it, take care of the trash and get it out there. And to build some type of fence or barrier across there somewhere.
With all those tires out there, environmental hazard.
They have to be taken to the landfill, there's a charge reach tire. So I think the people who dump them out there, there's probably over 100 tires.
That's the thing, I wanted to contact the state fire marshal because we had a similar problem with the one out there by Rose's Diners and, and we got the fire marshal out there to get the guy to clean it up. And it's, of course, it's an environmental hazard, so maybe we need to contact the fire marshal, go out there and take a look at it and let them get involved as well.
Want me to wait and see if the owners hired a contractor first to remove them?
Well, have you got, did you get anything back from them yet?
This morning.
You did? Okay, so, all right.
Talked to the owner about it.
Okay, good.
Because the contractor I had recommended yesterday, so it's pretty recent. So hopefully I'd give him a little bit of time to work it out.
All right, if he doesn't, then I'd contact the state fire marshal's office and let them know about it. Okay, here ain't nothing else? Motion to adjourn the meeting?
I didn't get here in time to sign in, but I've got something I'm going to say and I think I'm going to be heard. You bring up the issues about.
Come up front.
I don't have to get up front, you can hear me from here, my voice is loud enough that you can hear me. The property up on 213 that you're talking about, condemning or whatever it may be, that guy came in here several years ago with a plan and he got a planetary plan for the, the planning commission, Mary Jo was on the board at the time. The economy the way it is right now, nobody in their right mind would be spending a half a million dollars, a million dollars to redo this property. Number one. You talk about the parking downtown with the truck. I saw this when you were talking to that truck driver. He's delivering to the North Street Hotel, delivering beer and he's delivering to the Howard House. Two businesses that have been there forever and ever and ever. North Street, North Street, there's not a car on the damn street, excuse me, other than mine, I parked there to have coffee, which we do every morning. And we've been told I'm belligerent as I might possibly be. Jimmy's been called belligerent, the whole nine yards from people here and ever. Years ago, or a year ago, so forth, you're supposed to get signs up there to put up here about trucks coming into the town of Elton from WIMCO. I could go over to the sign thing and get a sign up there within 15 minutes from a guy. You got to go through WIMCO to do this. The trucks come down, that particular driver has had his truck on the side of the road and back tractor trailers all the way out, all the way out to High Street to get trucks out. That particular driver, Mary Jo, that particular driver. Where's the issue right here with this whole thing about town? You've got guys that are in business here and all of a sudden you got a problem with parking. That's bull, any way you look at it. The same thing you're talking about ordinances about this property up here. What's it, two meetings ago, I brought up issues about Charlie's Basada's place up there and Mark, whichever one's owner, either Mark Saunders or Charlie Basada, which supported some of you in this last election. Their properties, you wouldn't live in those properties, you wouldn't have them next door to you, but they're still there. We sent two letters. How long ago has that been? Two months ago? You've got the ordinances and Charlie Hicks knows more about the ordinance than all of them because he was a enforcement officer. You talk about it, but you don't do anything about it. I mean, it's ridiculous. And I, I got here late, but I'll tell you one thing. If I went out to, to the park out there on Dollar Avenue and pitched a tent after the hours are closed, pitched a tent and moved in there, I'm damn sure I'd be locked up real quick because of who I am, as opposed to what's going on in this town of Elton right now. The town's become an area, and it's not all your fault, but it's become an area where these people that are brought in here from Meeting Ground, which you've had problems with in the past, Meeting Ground's a religious organization all of a sudden. The county gives them money, although it's a religious organization, because the courts told you guys, it's not your fault here. But if it's a religious organization, why doesn't the county pay? That's got nothing, I shouldn't get into there. But the whole issue of it is, there's more going on in this town than any of you can even do anything about. You've got the drugs. I can't, I can't build a bonfire in my yard to burn my leaves on my garden, but they do it right down on town property, park property. And I'm, you know, you all know my personality, hard-headed as I can possibly be. And I grew up in this town, more so than, you only want, Charlie grew up in this town and so did Earl. Grew up in this town a long time ago. If I went out there and a guy I know very well would like to do the same thing, I'd do, go ahead and pitch a tent back here at the Meadow Park, pitch a tent out there after hours. Build a bonfire and sit there with a cooler, a beer and have drinks and see how long it would take somebody in this police department to come arrest me. It would happen real quick, just like that. The ordinances are here, but you talk about it, it's nothing but lip service, you do nothing about it. You all talk about ordinances. Do something about the ordinances that are already on the books. That's all you have to do, that's all we're asking for. Because you turn around and it just seems like it goes over everybody's head. You talk about it, but nothing's done. None of you would live in that house down here on West Main Street that we talked about before, none of you would live in that. The windows are busted out and they've got curtains on, broken windows. You wouldn't have a next door to any of you because of deflated property. But this is what the hell, excuse me again, but this is what, it's all lip service, is all you're doing up here. All of you. That's all you're doing. I, I would like to build a bonfire in my, do leaves in my backyard because you put it in your garden, leaves help it. It puts nitrogen back in the air or whatever. But if I did that, I know, I know very well I'd be arrested like that because of the open, open firewall. I know that. But other people do it, they don't pay taxes, but never contributed to this county, never contributed to the town of Elton, but they get away with what they want to do because, and it's not all your fault. Because Elton now is the spot where everybody comes from all over to get the handout. That's not your fault. But you've got ordinances here. I went by the other day when I was going to dinner last night. It was dark. People were still back there and that park giving that food to the ones there in Mariner. Becky, quit shaking your head, you don't even want to talk about it. But anyhow, they're in there and the park is wider, close the damn going gate. Close the gate like it's supposed to be done after dusk, what should be done. I apologize for getting upset, but that's, I can't help that. I'm just discussing what's going on in this town. And another thing, I got the budget northeast the other day, just to prepare some what you want in Elton. You'd be surprised what they do down in northeast for a whole lot less money than what this town of Elton, a whole lot less money than what the town of Elton does.
Okay, thank you. I have a motion to adjourn.
Sub move.
All those in favor?
Aye.
This meeting to adjourn.